Welcome everyone to the reorganization meeting of the Westfield Town Council of January 6, 2026, at 7:00 PM for the purpose of organizing for the year 2026 and transacting such business as properly come before the mayor and town council. On December 10, 2025, notice of this meeting was provided to the Westfield leader, the Star Ledger, posted on the municipal bulletin board, and filed in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Prior to the commencement of this meeting, Mayor Berman, Councilwoman Adwar, Councilman Vekka Taraman, Councilwoman Gilman, Councilman Pecker, were sworn in privately to establish a quorum necessary to open the meeting. The mayor and newly-elected council members will be sworn in ceremonially during this meeting upon the arrival of Governor-elect Mikey Sherrill. Please rise for the invocation, which will be given by Rabbi Ethan Prosnit from Temple Emmanuel in Westfield, and remain standing for the salute to the flag.
As our nation prepares to celebrate its 250th year, we are reminded that democracy is renewed not only through history, but through moments like this one, when individuals step forward to accept the trust of their community and the responsibility of public service. Tonight, we gather with gratitude for this town and for the people who sustain it. We give thanks for a community shaped by diversity, strengthened by engagement, and grounded in a shared belief that local leadership matters because the decisions made here touch daily lives in real and lasting ways. We offer blessing to those newly-elected and who are sworn into office this evening. May you lead with integrity and humility, guided by wisdom, fairness, and compassion. May you have the courage to make difficult decisions, the patience to listen across differences, and the clarity to remember that leadership is not about power, but about service to the common good. We also express our gratitude for those officials who continue in their service, whose experience, steadiness, and institutional memory help guide this council and strengthen the work ahead. We also pray for a spirit of partnership between leaders and residents. May the residents of Westfield remember that our town-elected officials are volunteers. May we treat them with respect, understanding that they too want the best for the town they live in. May this town council of Westfield be a place where differing voices strengthen rather than divide the community we share as we mark the 250th anniversary of the United States. May this new chapter of leadership reflect enduring promise of democracy at its best, rooted in service, shaped by responsibility, and sustained by hope for the future we are building together. And together we say, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of liberty and justice.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. It is a privilege to be here alongside my fellow council members, family, friends, and residents. I am honored to be presiding over this meeting as my first as mayor of Westfield. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to recognize current and former elected officials who took the time to join us tonight. Please welcome Councilman David Contract, Mayor Tom Jardim, Mayor Shelley Brindle, Councilwoman Emily Root, County Commissioner Kim Palmieri-Muddad, County Commissioner Joe Signorello, County Commissioner Rebecca Williams, and Mayor of Cranford Kathleen Miller-Prunty, Councilman Scott Katz, the tallest guy in the room, Councilwoman Dawn Mackey, and Councilwoman Linda Habgood. I'm getting there. Councilman Jim Healy, Councilman Carl Salisbury, there he is. And I'll have a few words in a minute for Governor-elect Mikey Sherrill. This evening, we'll share our goals and priorities for 2026, present the state of the town address, appoint volunteers to our various boards and commissions, and reorganize this council for the meaningful work in this new year. Local government can be democracy at its best, and I am proud to be a part of that. So next, welcome Governor-elect to Westfield. It is a true honor and privilege that you took the time out of your incredibly busy schedule to join us tonight. Your presence here demonstrates your dedication to engaging directly with local communities. I've had the privilege of spending time with our new governor over the course of this campaign, and New Jersey is lucky to have a woman of strength, honor, intelligence, compassion, and dignity to lead our state. We are deeply grateful that you have chosen to spend some time with us tonight, and we look forward to your remarks and to a strong partnership between our town and the state government. Please join me in welcoming Governor-elect Mikey Sherrill.
Well, thank you so much. It is an honor to be here in Westfield tonight. You know, I have been going around the state since January 1st, swearing people in, and I have to tell you that each time I walk into a room like this with a bunch of citizens who could be doing a number of other things, you could be on the couch in your PJs watching Netflix. I don't wanna, I didn't want to remind you of that because some of you might be thinking of that, but you came out tonight because you care so much about your community and your town. And I hope, like I do, as we do the oath of office, all of you get the same chills I get every single time I hear it. It is such a solemn oath and such a great commitment by our elected officials to serve you, to listen to you, to think about what's keeping you up at night, to make sure they're addressing all those key needs, to get you that one-seat ride into New York City. And so, I am so honored to be here and to get to administer the oath, and so honored to have, again and again, people across the state who want to step up, give of their time to serve others. It's really the gold standard in public service, and we're certainly seeing it here tonight. And to have all of you come out to support them means so much. So, thank you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Okay, so you have your right hand up? Please repeat after me. I, Reshma Adwar,
I, Reshma Adwar,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith
And I will bear true faith.
and allegiance
And allegiance.
to the same
To the same.
and to the governments
And to the governments.
established in the United States
Established in the United States.
and in this state
And in this state.
under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
impartially
Impartially.
and justly
And justly.
perform all the duties
Perform all the duties.
of the office of town council member
Of the office of town council member.
according to the best of my abilities
According to the best of my abilities.
and understanding
And understanding.
so help me God. Congratulations. So, right hand up, that's great. I, Vik Venkataraman
I, Vik Venkataraman
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith
And that I will bear true faith.
and allegiance
And allegiance.
to the same
To the same.
and to the governments
And to the governments.
established in the United States
Established in the United States.
and in this state
And in this state.
under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
impartially
Impartially.
and justly
And justly.
perform all the duties
Perform all the duties.
of the office of town council member
Of the office of town council member.
according to the best of my abilities
According to the best of my abilities.
and understanding
And understanding.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
They'll never make it.
I, Jennifer Gilman
I, Jennifer Gilman
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
of the United States
Of the United States.
and the Constitution
And the Constitution.
of the State of New Jersey
Of the State of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith
And that I will bear true faith.
and allegiance
And allegiance.
to the same
To the same.
and to the governments
And to the governments.
established in the United States
Established in the United States.
and in this state
And in this state.
under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
impartially
Impartially.
and justly
And justly.
perform all the duties
Perform all the duties.
of the office of town council member
Of the office of town council member.
according to the best of my abilities
According to the best of my abilities.
and understanding
And understanding.
so help me God.
So help me God.
congratulations. How's that feel? That's pretty great. Okay, guys, I love this. All right. I'll do this quickly. I, Drew Pecker
I, Drew Pecker
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support
That I will support.
the Constitution
The Constitution.
of the United States
Of the United States.
and the Constitution
And the Constitution.
of the State of New Jersey
Of the State of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith
And that I will bear true faith.
and allegiance
And allegiance.
to the same
To the same.
and to the governments
And to the governments.
established in the United States
Established in the United States.
and in this state
And in this state.
under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
impartially
Impartially.
and justly
And justly.
perform all the duties
Perform all the duties.
of the office of town council member
Of the office of town council member.
according to the best of my abilities
According to the best of my abilities.
and understanding
And understanding.
so help me God.
Help me God.
I, Jeremy Berman
I, Jeremy Berman
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support
That I will support.
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution
And the Constitution.
of the State of New Jersey
Of the State of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith
And that I will bear true faith.
and allegiance
And allegiance.
to the same
To the same.
and to the governments
And to the governments.
established in the United States
Established in the United States.
and in this state
And in this state.
under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
impartially
Impartially.
and justly
And justly.
perform all the duties
Perform all the duties.
of the office of mayor
Of the office of mayor.
of the town of Westfield
Of the town of Westfield.
according to the best of my abilities
According to the best of my abilities.
and understanding
And understanding.
so help me God
So help me God.
congratulations, mayor.
Okay. I now call this meeting to order. Ms. Laoshi, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember Gilman
Here.
Tom McGala
Here.
Pecker
Here.
Kiefer
Here. Not here.
Saunders
Here.
Adwar
Here.
Armento
Here.
Vik Taraman
Here.
Mayor Berman
Here. I will now propose the acting and alternate acting mayor appointments for the year 2026. Acting Mayor Jen Gilman. Alternate acting Mayor Vik Venkataraman. May I have a motion to accept these appointments? Councilman Armento, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Reshma Adwar. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion is carried. I will now name council appointments. All of the following appointments will be through December 31 of the stated year. Planning Board Liaison Drew Pecker, 2026. Board of Adjustment Paul Eilbacher, 2029. Board of Adjustment Kell Monar, 2029. Mark Lipton, 2027. Special Improvement District Board Josh Halpern, 2028. Lou Katzenes, 2028. Zach Mastromato, 2026. Jeff Kirshenbaum, 2028. Anastasia Harrison, 2027. Vik Venkataraman, council designee, 2026. Craig Gibson, 2026. Jeremy Berman, 2026. May I have a motion to accept the council appointments? Councilman Tom McGala, seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Jen Gilman, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion is carried. I now propose employee appointments. The following are proposed employee appointments: the resolution to appoint the municipal prosecutor and the resolution to appoint the public defender. May I have a motion to accept these employee appointments?
So moved.
Councilman Armento, seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Pecker. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion is carried. And now we'll propose board appointments. The Board of Health Elizabeth Telmott, 2029. Jerusha Alexic, 2027. Council Liaison Michael Armento, 2026. The Recreation Commission Dean Olegino, 2028. Callie Campbell, 2028. Jeffrey Perella, 2028. Andrea Stagg, 2028. Patrick Duffy- Patrick Duffy, 2028. Bonnie Stewart, 2027. Council Liaison Jen Gilman, 2026. Historic Preservation Commission Jackie Brevard, 2029. Chris Defradis, 2028. Nancy Rich, 2027. Council Liaison Michael Domagala, 2026. Tree Preservation Commission Diane Chevelle, 2028. Chris Emmonsen, 2028. Council Liaison David Kiefer, 2026. The Library Board Colleen Cusick, 2030. Kim Cagle, 2030. Council Liaison Michael Domagala, 2026. The Westfield Housing Commission John O'Brien, 2026. Sasha Nisbet, 2026. Paul Marco Tulio, 2026. Karina Gerich Sesterro, 2026. Don Sammet, 2026. Frank Vouso, 2026. Council Liaison Todd Saunders, 2026. Public Arts Commission Samantha Mooney, 2026. Margaret Smith, 2026. Rachel Eckerling, 2027. Tamara Block, 2027. Drew Kellerman, 2027. Dan Tagger, 2026. Council Liaison Rashma Adwar, 2026. The Human Relations Advisory Commission Chris George, 2028. Kelly Florio, 2028. Tia Fagan, 2028. Sigmund Shen, 2027. Elizabeth Gerhard, 2027. Council Liaison Drew Pecker, 2026. The Mental Health Council Lauren Kaplan Siegel, 2027. Allison Marcal, 2027. Rachel Christensen, 2027. Mia Morse, 2027. Andrea De Leon, 2027. Lily Talmont, 2027. Council Liaison Michael Armento, 2026. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Board Sarah Schaefer, 2026. Mark Ballinger, 2026. Chris Emmonsen, 2026. Avni Malankar, 2026. Sarah Giannantonio, 2026. Council Liaison Rashma Adwar. May I have a motion to accept these board appointments?
Yes.
Councilman Saunders, seconded?
Second.
Seconded, Councilman Armento. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? This motion is carried. And now we'll read the mayoral appointments and council liaisons. Planning Board Michael Laplace, 2029. Evan Cohen, 2029. Ann Friedman, 2027. Jeremy Berman, 2026. Chief Michael Dulce, 2026. Solid Waste Advisory Board Jeff Burke, 2026. Union County Transportation Advisory Board Harvey Davidson and Chris Defradis, 2026. Union County Air Traffic Advisory Board Jerome Feder and Daniel Lorenzo, 2026. The Union County Community Development Revenue Sharing Committee Peter Beck and Shafali Gandhi, 2026. The Chamber of Commerce Liaison Todd Saunders. Union County League of Municipalities Jeremy Berman. The Board of Education Liaison Jeremy Berman. The Westfield Senior Housing Corporation Liaison David Kiefer. This year's council committees for 2026. The Finance Policy Committee Vic Venkataraman Chair, Drew Pecker Vice Chair, David Kiefer, Michael Domagala. Code Review and Town Property Committee Drew Pecker Chair, Jen Gilman Vice Chair, David Kiefer and Michael Armento. Public Safety, Transportation and Parking Committee Jen Gilman Chair, Rashma Adwar Vice Chair, Todd Saunders, Michael Domagala. Public Works Committee Rashma Adwar Chair, Vic Venkataraman Vice Chair, Michael Armento and Todd Saunders. Okay, thank you.
(audience laughing)
It is time for the State of the Town address. Good evening and thank you for being here. I hope everyone has a happy and healthy start to 2026. It is my honor and privilege to stand before you tonight as the 35th Mayor of Westfield. I am humbled and deeply grateful for this opportunity, responsibility, and I'm immensely thankful to our community for entrusting me to lead our town. I want to congratulate new council members Rashma Adwar, Vic Venkataraman, Jen Gilman and Drew Pecker for their election victories and their commitment to public service. I'd also...
(audience cheering)
I'd also like to thank current members of our town council Todd Saunders, Mike Armento, Mike Domagala and David Kiefer for your continued commitment to our town and your willingness to serve the people of Westfield. On behalf of our entire town, I would like to thank Mayor Shelley Brindle and council people Linda Habgood, Mike Dartia, David Contract, Don Mackey and Jim Healy for their eight years of dedicated service to our town. The ultimate test of good governance is whether you have left your community in a better place than you found it, and the previous administration passed that test with flying colors. Thank you to Rabbi Ethan Proznet of Temple Emanuel for our invocation and Reverend Allison Phillip from the United Methodist Church, who will be delivering the benediction later this evening. I am thankful to have such strong community leaders stand beside us and help connect and unite our community. Thank you to all the residents who volunteer to serve on committees, boards and commissions. Your energy and passion will be the engine that moves many of our shared priorities forward. And a very special thank you to Governor-elect Mikey Sherrill, who took time out of her busy schedule to join us tonight. I would next like to thank our exceptional town employees that keep our town functioning and flourishing. With that said, I would like to specifically acknowledge the administrative team, which includes Ellen O'Donnell, Public Information Officer Kim Ford, Town Clerk Maureen Laoshi, Assistant Administrator Heather Riferati, Town Attorney Tom Jardine, and last but certainly not least, Town Administrator Jim Gildei. In addition, and on behalf of our entire council, I would like to acknowledge the continued great work of our town department heads. Police Chief Chris Battaloro. Fire Chief Michael Dulce. Public Works Director Craig Gibson.
(audience cheering)
Town Planner Don Sammet.
(audience cheering)
Construction Official Frank Vouso.
(audience cheering)
Town Engineer Mike Bignell.
(audience cheering)
CFO Scott Olson.
(audience cheering)
Tax Assessor Neil Rubenstein.
(audience cheering)
Tax Collector Henry Wang.
(audience cheering)
Library Director Alan McGinley.
(audience cheering)
Recreation Director Dan Hance. Regional Health Officer Megan Avaloni.
(audience cheering)
Court Administrator Vanessa Tovar.
(audience cheering)
And Downtown Westfield Corporation Executive Director Dan Tagger.
(audience cheering)
On a personal note, I'd like to thank my team Wendy Sapperstone, Callie Campbell and Abby Cohen for getting me to this point. No words can adequately convey how thankful I am.
(audience cheering)
And I am grateful for the guidance of Mike Ash and Tom Jardine throughout this transition process.
(audience cheering)
Lastly, I want to thank my family for supporting me over the last year. It has been quite the journey and I couldn't have done it without you by my side. To my sons Zach and Charlie, I am so incredibly proud of you both. And to my amazing wife Erica, who is the glue that keeps our family together, I love you very much. Public service calls on the best of us. It demands our time and attention to serve something greater than ourselves and to stand firmly for what we believe is right. It asks us to work towards a noble goal without any guarantee of success, without knowing whether we win or lose, only knowing that the effort itself matters. And now, more than ever, is the moment for good people to step forward, answer that call and help shape stronger communities and create a better world for those who come next. With our organization meeting tonight, political season, at least for a brief period of time, has ended. The nine of us on this dais are tasked with the same responsibility, making Westfield a great place to live, work and raise our families. On this stage, we're all Westfield Blue Devils and we all wear the same jersey. We all respect our town's history and will work together to move Westfield forward. Now, as we begin 2026, I am pleased to share that the state of our town is strong. Westfield remains in exceptional fiscal health, maintaining its AAA bond rating as one of only 44 towns in New Jersey, as well as a healthy surplus heading into 2026. Our police and fire departments are well-staffed and funded at the highest levels in town history to ensure their continued standard of excellence. The Department of Public Works continues to maintain and improve the physical plan of our community, working to improve our stormwater system, planting new trees, maintaining our parks and attending to all seasonal needs. The condition of grass fields throughout town improved in 2025 and we hope to increase the maintenance partnership with the Board of Education this coming year. The Recreation Department continues the planning process for the Tamakius Park Improvement Plan and renovations at both Houlihan Sid Fay and the Memorial Park Tennis Courts are slated for later this year. The fourth round Affordable Housing Plan has been approved, which ensures that 70% of our town remains zoned for single-family residential use. In addition to the exciting, ongoing town events like Adams Fest, Tour de Westfield and National Night Out, new events this year include plans for the America 250 celebration. Now, I'd like to briefly outline some of the priorities I'll be working on over the next four years. Priorities shaped by our conversations, our needs and our shared vision for Westfield. First, the safety and security of our residents is any mayor's number one priority and I will be unwavering in my support and funding for our first responders. Our police and fire departments are among the best in the state and they will continue to get the resources they need to protect Westfield. We will also make sure the necessary investments in our volunteer rescue squad to ensure they have the lifesaving equipment and technology required to do their jobs. For our residents, bike and pedestrian safety is a critical part of this equation and we are committed to making our roads safer for everyone. As I pledged during the campaign, we have already begun the process to request reduced speed limits on county roads and are actively considering lower speed limits in school zones when children are present. Second, our downtown is the cornerstone of our community. We need to work together to ensure it stays fresh and vibrant and is attractive to residents and visitors. We will work to improve the maintenance and beautification of our downtown. As a small business owner myself, I will continue to be a champion for small business throughout all of Westfield. Third, Westfield's small-town feel and history are central to our community and must be protected. I want to ensure that Westfield's growth is sustainable, forward-thinking, fiscally responsible and preserves the charm and character that make our town special. All previously approved projects will require holding developers accountable and in light of the recent financial news surrounding our current development partner for the One Westfield Place project, that may require serious consideration and potential action. Fourth, local government should always work to improve the quality of life for its residents. We will work together to continue to provide solutions in key areas: parking and traffic issues, recreation programming and investments in our stormwater and sewer systems to protect against flooding. Finally, we must preserve, protect and improve our town parks, invest in better fields for youth sports and utilize our limited resources and space so that our parks and fields reflect the high standards of our town. No matter the issue and regardless of the specific policy goal, I will listen to and respect all voices and engage early and often. I will continue my town talks to hear directly from residents, remain accessible and be transparent about how decisions are made. I will prioritize fiscal responsibility, ensure every dollar is thoughtfully budgeted and work collaboratively with fellow elected officials, town employees and residents, always putting Westfield first. Thank you again for being here tonight and for supporting our newly-elected officials. Westfield is truly a special place to call home and together we will ensure it continues to thrive. We are the stewards of this town, entrusted with its care and our shared responsibility is to leave Westfield stronger and better than we found it. May we lead with integrity, kindness and purpose. I wish you all a peaceful new year filled with exciting new beginnings. Thank you. Now it is time for open discussion by citizens. Anyone may come up to the microphone and speak to the council on any subject on which the council has jurisdiction. Please state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to five minutes. Hearing none... Oh, sorry.
(audience laughing)
Still new at this, we're getting there. That was a quick trigger. Please.
(audience laughing)
Hopefully it's not none. Give me a chance. Hi, I'm Michael Ring. I live at 716 Coolidge Street. Good evening, Mayor Berman, Mayor... Members of the town council, chief, fellow residents in Coolidge Street. I'm here tonight as a husband, a father and a lifelong Westfield resident who chooses to raise his family here because of safety, trust, sense of community that this town has always represented. Over the past few years and with increasing frequency in the past few months, that sense of security has been shaken on Coolidge Street. In that time, there have been at least 10 documented break-ins, attempted break-ins and vehicle thefts within a very small geographic area. Several homes have been targeted more than once. Some incidents occur on holidays, some in the middle of the night. In one case, a delivery driver was deliberately lowered to the area just to have their vehicle stolen. Most concerning is what we are now seeing, an escalation from vehicles into occupied homes. Just weeks ago, my home was targeted for the second time. Days later, my neighbors across the street, their house was targeted for a second time, an attempted break-in on Christmas... On the night of Christmas Day. The intent is clear: access to car keys. And the message was clear as well: this street is being targeted. This is not isolated and this is not new. And I want to be very clear about something. As a resident, we are doing everything we are trying to do to... Whatever we are supposed to do. Our homes are locked, our windows are secured, our cars are locked. Many of us have alarm systems, lights, exterior lighting, some even have dogs. Despite all these measures, the crimes continue. These actions are not deterred and the thieves continue. That tells us something important. This is not about the residents failing to protect themselves. This is about the deterrents that are no longer working. When criminals are willing to enter homes while families are inside, we are no longer talking about property crime. We are talking about public safety and personal safety. We are talking about public safety and personal safety. That shift matters and should concern every resident in this town. I want to be very, very clear. I support the Westfield Police Department. This is not a criticism of their commitment or their professionalism. It's a recognition that the current strategies and current laws are not acting as sufficient deterrents, particularly for organized theft and repeat offenders. We understand and appreciate that the Westfield Police Department has worked very hard to identify and arrest some of these members. But what's troubling however, is what happens after those arrests. In many cases, individuals, often repeat offenders, sometimes minors, they're released quickly, oftentimes in the same day and with little more than a summons. Residents are reporting incidents, we are filing reports, we are calling, we are emailing and yet, the pattern continues. Our individual voices are not enough and that is why I am here tonight. We need the leadership and advocacy of the town of Westfield, not just individual residents, to push for meaningful change at the state level. Westfield has influence, Westfield has credibility. A coordinated official voice from the town carries more weight and trend than a dozen of our residents speaking with our individual voices. I'm asking the mayor, the town council, the chief of police to formally advocate for stronger state-level consequences for organized auto theft and also for repeat offenders. Push for meaningful pre-trial detention when public safety is clearly at risk and apply coordinated pressure alongside neighboring towns on state leadership to act. And at the local level, support proactive solutions, not reactive ones. This includes actively pursuing state-level financial assistance to support enhanced local enforcement efforts. Specifically, increase night patrols in the areas that are being targeted, like Coolidge Street. Expand the use of license plate scanning technology to help identify those stolen vehicles and the organized patterns of activity. And additionally, I want to propose the establishment of a structured neighborhood watch program developed in partnership with the police department. Not informal group texts, not isolated vigilance, but an organized, supported effort that increases visibility, communication and deterrence where the crimes are occurring. Because right now it's clear, existing deterrents are not enough. I do not want to stand here months from now or even after far something worse has happened, explaining again the warning signs that were there, the visible opportunity and the acts that was missed. I grew up in this town, I believe in what Westfield stands for, I choose to raise my family here for a reason. Tonight, I am asking you to help restore that sense of security. That's the security that defines this community and it also is the one that is not just for my family, but for all of us. Let Westfield lead and not wait. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any others? Seeing no others, I close this portion of the meeting and move to the reports of the standing committees. Beginning with the Finance Policy Committee, Councilman Venkataraman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have 23 resolutions, 21 of which I would like to move as a package. One, resolution to approve the cash management plan. Two, resolution to approve 2026 petty cash accounts. Three, resolution to approve third-party provider for payroll services. Four, resolution to appoint public agency compliance officer. Five, resolution designating the Westfield Leader and the Star Ledger as official newspapers. Six, resolution to appoint Green Team. Seven, resolution to appoint retail advisory board. Eight, resolution to appoint the Westfield Senior Advisory Council. Nine, resolution to appoint auditor. Ten, resolution to appoint town attorney. Eleven, resolution to appoint professional services town attorney. Twelve, resolution to obtain professional services labor attorney. Thirteen, resolution to obtain professional services labor attorney. Fourteen, resolution to appoint special affordable housing council. Fifteen, resolution to appoint bond council. Sixteen, resolution to appoint redevelopment attorney. Seventeen, resolution to appoint redevelopment planner. Eighteen, resolution to appoint redevelopment bond council. Nineteen, resolution to appoint redevelopment owners representative. Twenty, resolution to appoint risk management services and health insurance consultant or broker. Twenty-one, resolution authorizing agreement with the community grants planning and housing for Affordable Housing Administration.
May I have a second? Second. Second, Councilman Saunders. Any discussion? All in favor? Yes. Yes. Opposed? The motion is carried.
Next, I would like to move a resolution to approve the 2026 temporary budget.
May I have a second? Second, Councilman Don McGala. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Gilman?
Yes.
Don McGala?
Yes.
Pecker?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Adwar?
Yes.
Armento?
Yes.
Venkataraman?
Yep.
Mayor Berman?
Yes. The motion is carried.
Twenty-three, I would like to move a resolution to approve the 2026 temporary swim pool utility budget.
May I have a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Gilman. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Gilman?
Yes.
Don McGala?
Yes.
Pecker?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Adwar?
Yes.
Armento?
Yes.
Venkataraman?
Yes.
Mayor Berman?
Yes, the motion is carried. Next is the Public Safety, Transportation and Parking Committee, Councilwoman Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three resolutions I would like to move as a package. One, resolution to appoint on-call traffic consultant. Two, resolution to appoint redevelopment traffic consultant. Three, resolution to appoint redevelopment parking consultant.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconding Councilwoman Adwar. Any discussion? All in favor? Yes. Opposed? The motion is carried. Next is the Code Review and Town Property Committee, Councilman Pecker.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move a resolution to appoint municipal housing liaison.
May I have a second? Yes. Seconding Councilman Venkataraman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Okay. Last is the Public Works Committee, Councilwoman Adwar.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move a resolution to appoint C3 sewer operator.
May I have a second? Seconding Councilwoman Saunders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Please rise for the benediction which will be given by Reverend Allison Phillip from the United Methodist Church in Westfield.
Please join me in prayer. O loving one, who is the source of our breath, who shapes our steps through this world, who holds us in grace and love, we give you thanks for the sacred gift and responsibility of leadership. Thank you for each member of town council and for our new mayor, each who is taking hold of this gift and responsibility in the year ahead. May they feel a healthy mix of humility and confidence as they do. May they sense the support and encouragement of others. May they focus on the signs of hope as they build up our community, as they lead with open hearts and open ears and open hands. May they listen for wisdom even in those who disagree with them. And may they also shake off the dust of ill-intentioned comments and cacophonous voices. May all of us seek out and cultivate the kind of community we want to live in, which is something each of us has the power to do and that we do together. May all of us take courage and action in the sphere where we live to care for our well-being and that of our neighbors. May we be mindful of the blessing of life and the blessing of community. And may we orient ourselves toward what is good and just. May we be rooted in grace and love tonight, in the coming year and beyond. Amen.
Amen. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn? Councilman Pecker, second? Seconded by everyone. Any discussion?
Oh, just one thing.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Just to the resident that came up and talked about the Coolidge Street, I want to say like, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I could probably speak for everyone that we totally hear you. I'd love to discuss it afterwards. I've been on the Public Safety Committee for two years now and I will say that the chief and the entire committee since I've been on it hear exactly what you're saying and you have at least my full support in doing whatever is necessary. So, I appreciate you coming, I'd love to chat afterwards, so thank you for coming. Thank you.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? The motion is carried, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Before everyone goes, we'd like to invite everyone to a post-meeting celebration at Mays, right at the train station. Please join us for drinks.